The March 7, 2024 meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing in accordance with the Town Board's enactment of Local Law Number 14 of 2022, adopted on May 24, 2022. Our next meeting and those following also will be held in person here at Town Hall and will continue to allow for remote participation, so please keep checking the town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only and not participate, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website for viewing access. With that, I'd like you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those of you with us tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. We'll begin this meeting with public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find you're having difficulties accessing the hearing, visit the Town Clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, for those of you in this boardroom, please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recording of our proceedings. Tonight, board member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom and member Keith Tuttle is absent. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals speaking on a particular application have a time limit of three minutes. Also, before handing in any submissions to the board tonight, please make sure that the documents identify the ZBA application name and tax map number. The application name should also be written on all your certified receipts. Unless otherwise stated at the end of an individual application, hearing all applica... I'm sorry. Unless otherwise stated at the end of an individual application hearing, all applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until a date given. Those written comments can be addressed to the members of the board and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowell. At this time, I would like a motion to approve the minutes of our February 15, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes aye. Okay, minutes are approved. John, would you like to take us through the agenda?
Yes, we're going to begin with the adjournments first. Case number six, modification request. This application has been re-advertised for the March 21 meeting. Case number eight, application of Emily McCarthy, 7 Quantuck Bay Lane, Quiag, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-359-5-5. This application will be adjourned to the April 4 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes aye.
John, if you could move forward, could you just do the same thing with number seven? I've printed that before.
Oh, sure.
Number seven to nine.
Seven, okay. Application of John T. Montcalvo et al., 1129, 1089, and 1169 Spionc Riverhead Road, Suffolk County... I'm sorry, Remsenberg Spionc, Suffolk County Tax Map Numbers 900-301-2-6, 7, and 8. This application will be adjourned to the April 4 meeting.
Uh, September 5th.
Uh, to the September 5th meeting, excuse me.
September 5th meeting, a second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, turning to the decision calendar. Following decisions will be adjourned to the March 21 meeting. Eric J. Belfi and Tara Belfi, 370 Fowler Street LLC, SA123 LLC.
We're going to reopen those.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So going back, decisions adjourned to the March 21 meeting. Eric J. Belfi and Tara Belfi, 370 Fowler Street LLC, Town of Southampton Housing Authority, Roberto Camming, Mark Smith and Heather Cole, Renette Riley, J10 Properties LLC, Dillett Patel and Subjit Akhaur Dhillon, Aaron Appel and Alexander Vayman.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, I make a motion to reopen the application of Yellow Shack LLC to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move to close with a decision to be rendered later on this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I make a motion to reopen the application of SA123 LLC to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move to close with a decision to be rendered on March 21.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to reopen the application of 249 Surfside LLC to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I move to close with a decision to be rendered on March 21.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Number one on the calendar, on the agenda, excuse me, 11 Watermill LLC, 11 Water Heights Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-64-3-6.4. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Section 330-11 Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal rear yard setback from the required 100 feet to 94.6 feet for a proposed addition to the rear of the one-family dwelling and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
This is a minor variance, so does not require a public hearing. We will render a decision at the end of the meeting tonight.
Close the record.
Close the record on this and render a decision tonight.
Okay, do we need a vote on this? Okay. Second.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes aye.
Okay. Number two on the agenda, Changyi, 13 Ocker Lane, Shinnecock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-211-2-20. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, proposed additions, Section 330-84D Pyramid Law, for a sky plane encroachment of 584 cubic feet on the west side of the west and north additions. And two, for an exterior basement entry, Section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Section 330-83C and D yards to allow the exterior basement entry to be located within the total required side yard for the principal building on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction. Bob, do you have a folder on this? Candace, Bob, leave.
Sir, you don't have to. Yes.
Can you pass this to Bob? Thanks.
You come right here.
Are you an attorney?
No, Miguel Weinstein.
Okay. You want to raise your hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Miguel Weinstein, 41 Yukon Drive, Woodbury, New York, 11797.
Okay, Miguel.
All right, tell us what's going on.
Good evening. I'm the architect representing the owner, Changyi. We are requesting the relief for the pyramid law for the sky plane encroachment of 584 cubic feet to the west side for a second floor addition and a relief for the placement of an exterior basement entry located within the total required side yard. The Landmark Board already reviewed our application and had issued a letter of decision with no objections to the additions, reframing of the house, and the new materials to be used in the construction of the house. No change will produce any change of the character of the neighborhood or with this area variance. The request is not substantial, very small, and there is no any physical impact to the environment, to the neighborhood, or the district. The difficulty was not self-created because the property was in single and separate ownership before the zoning implementations of 1957. We have also a letter from the neighbor from the north side of the property in favor of the application.
Okay, so I, as I understand, that this is for an access to the basement?
Correct.
And it is setback from the side how far?
12 feet and 8 and 1/2 inches.
And that you have pre-existing permission, pre-existing certificate of compliance for some of the other setbacks?
Correct.
Yeah, right, that you had originally listed, but now the building department has determined it's not required for variance.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the cubic foot pyramid relief request is minor?
It's really minor.
It's very minor. And the setback, in my opinion, is minor too. Bob, I know you're taking this over tonight, is there any particular questions you might have on this?
No, I mean, minimal relief on the pyramid and the entrances, no other access to the basement?
No, well, through the house.
Through the other, inside the house.
Yeah, but today with the laws, you have to have an exit, a secondary exit.
Is the basement finished?
No.
Okay. I mean, I have no problem with it.
Okay. Anybody else on the board wish to comment?
No.
John?
No.
Okay, before you leave, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on the application of 13 Ocker Lane, Shinnecock Hills?
Excuse me.
That doesn't count. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? Okay, Bob, a choice.
So we'll, I'll move to close the meeting, hold it open for written submissions until March 22 with a decision on April 4.
Second.
Mr. Mastodonio.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Number three on the agenda, Irene Vagianos and Martin Whelan, 29 Ramana Drive, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-292-2-64. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed detached garage on non-conforming lot. One, Section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in old districts, and Section 330-83C yards to allow the detached garage to be located within the required minimum side yard and required total side yard for the principal building and any other relief necessary.
Is there anybody here on this application? You need to come up, I need your affidavit posting. Are you representing the applicant or are you the applicant?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Architect's office.
Do you need the... Yep. Yep. Perfect, thank you. The board has jurisdiction. You choose. I'm going to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
Oh, no, I'm not an attorney.
Okay, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Samantha Detmer, 107 Montcalvo Highway, New York.
Samantha, what was your last name?
Detmer, D-E-T-T-M-E-R.
D-E-T-T-M-E-R.
M-A, Mary, E-R.
Okay, and you represent, you're the architect, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so tell us about the application.
So we have an accessory building that is sort of nestled within a corner of the footprint of the house, but not attached, and so it does meet the 1957 ruling setback on the side yard, but because it's tucked into the corner of the house, it seems to fall under the overall side setback on the property, so we're trying to get some relief for that to be able to keep the house. It is in the position of the original carport on the property, so...
But it's not attached?
But it's not attached, no.
So, and the relief that you're looking for is...
Is four feet, eight inches.
And you have a wetlands permit?
Yes.
Okay. And it's within the required minimum side yard and total side yard, so that's the relief that you need. Okay. All right, who's... This is Helen's. Has anybody got any particular questions on this?
I do not.
So it's basically taking up where the carport was before?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and it just...
It's enclosed now as opposed to just a, you know, a roof over it or whatever?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Seems to be minimal, minimal request?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'm going to ask, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application of 29 Ramana Drive in Hampton Bay?
Yeah, I'm the neighbor.
Please come forward.
Either it's there or the podium, either one. The podium is good. Sure. I mean, just speak right at the podium into the microphone.
Okay, but before you speak, I need to swear you in.
Oh.
Unless you are attorneys.
I'm not an attorney.
Okay, are you both going to speak?
Well, she could speak too.
Okay. Okay, fine, that's good. All right, so...
You just have to be by my... One at a time, ma'am, why don't you sit down? And sir, if you could stand and speak into the...
They can do the swearing together, and then I'll just ask them to give their names separately. Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and your address separately.
My name is Clifford Maenza, I'm the owner.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Clifford Maenza, I'm the owner.
Please say your last name.
Could you spell that? M-A-E-N-Z-A.
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 Okay, and...
I'm at 31 Ramana Drive, Hampton Bay, New York, 11946.
Okay, and your name?
Well, she has to come to the microphone.
Oh, come to the microphone because we're recording this, yeah.
Yes, my name is Antonina Wilson, I'm on 26 Ramana Drive, Hampton Bay. Can you just say your first name? Antonina's A-N-T-O-N-I-N-A. I think A-N-A-N-T-O.
N-I-N-A.
Yeah.
And where was your address again?
26 Ramana Drive.
Okay, good.
I still need the last name. Wilson. W-I-L. S-O-N. That's the one. I got it, thank you.
Okay, so who wants to go first?
I guess I do.
Okay.
The original footprint of the house, including where the carport was, was approximately 22 feet away from the property line. Now, when they bumped out the pool, it went 15, 15.5 feet away. Now, with the new proposed garage, it's going to be down to 10.2, 2 feet away from the property line. Also, they also have an electrical service adjacent to the property. Now, I spoke to the building inspector, I mentioned to him, it's supposed to be, all equipment's supposed to be 10 feet away, is that possible?
Yes.
Electrical service equipment?
What do you mean by electrical service equipment?
They have the service, you put your meters on.
The box?
It's a separate standing pole.
It's the box, yeah.
It seemed to be close, so I was just wondering, is that okay?
Is that part of the garage?
No.
Okay, so then that's not part of this application?
No, that's...
So we wouldn't have jurisdiction over those issues?
Okay, I just was asking a simple question about equipment.
Right, so you, you know who the owner is, and also this woman represents them, so maybe you could talk about that separately?
Right, because I had to ask the building...
We don't really have jurisdiction over that.
There was a building inspector around that day, and he told me all equipment's supposed to be 10 feet from the property line. Now, I spoke to the builder there, and he says they have no responsibility to that, they had someone else do it, an electrical contractor did installation on that, so I was just asking questions about it.
Okay.
I just want to know what the deal is, because sometimes they put these things in on corners of properties, whatever they do, and then most of the times they attach it to the structure itself, so I just didn't know the deal on that.
Building Department, the building department would be where you go for that?
Yeah, I spoke to, that's what they said, it's supposed to be 10 feet from the... Also, I was just wondering about the proposed garage, they're putting a breezeway that goes between the entrance to the house, if you can see, it's like steps, proposed garage between the structure stuff was detached. If they could, if they could shift it over like a little bit, a few feet over, is that possible? To make it now, you know, so open it up a little?
So it's an eight-foot breezeway? At least on my survey, it says it's eight feet.
Eight feet, if they can make it shorter, to shift it over a little bit more?
Okay, I'm going to pose that question to the architect.
So meaning push the garage back into that corner?
And also, you have a set, you also have a set of steps behind the garage, and that's pushing...
Well, the front door is in that back corner.
Right, so you have two entrance ways.
This is the, the front door here?
Correct, correct.
Ah, okay, all right. So I guess what he is asking is, you know, in order to get a little bit more relief on the side, to push over the garage a bit?
It would really make sort of a...
Narrow.
Tight entrance.
Yeah.
I don't think eight feet is extraordinary myself, but I mean...
Is it eight-foot breezeway?
That's what it says, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a little wide.
That's the landing for the front door, right? Where the back stairs and the front...
Yeah, I mean, it's not particularly wide if you're having to load in furniture or items, I mean, it's...
You could go through the back, you have those big sliders back there.
The, the back breezeway is five feet, and this is eight.
Well, he's asking for your consideration, and you...
I mean...
I mean, you still have your cake and eat, it'll just move, make it a little narrow.
It just makes it a little less of a...
You still have your...
I mean, from a design standpoint, it's really not optimal, you don't really have sort of a real front entrance that way if you're hiding it.
Right, how far is your house? Your house is to, if looking at this...
Which side, which side of the property is your house? Your house on that side?
To the right.
To the right?
To the right. I'm 22 feet away.
On your property line?
Right, from my property. It was, it was just, I'm used to having that big branded space, and then with 20, it was like 40 feet away, you know, between you, it was nice.
All right, so this is going to be 32 feet as opposed to 40?
It just, I'm just bringing up some points.
Yeah, okay, no, I get that.
Is there any landscaping that would help?
I am planning to put shrubbery in.
Maybe talk about that with the...
I, I already spoke to the owners, I was going to plan to put shrubbery down the property line, and they said that was fine. You know, I'm just trying to make it look pretty and, you know...
I agree, yeah, and this is what you want to do.
And I keep, I keep the place very, very nice, you know?
Good.
You know, I'm very, you know...
I like that.
She probably seen how I keep the place, you know?
No, it's a beautiful neighborhood piece.
Yeah.
No, I'm really on top of it, I keep the places very manicured.
Okay, great.
I've been there for 60 years, actually, I kind of grew up in the house.
You don't look that old.
I was this big when I was there. I'm, I'm the caretaker. And, and also, you know, and then maybe she gets a little... I don't know if it's going to help, because they have a pool now, they have gates going in, shrubbery, I don't know if it's going to help them much, I don't know, just, it's just an idea, that's all.
Is there any plan for, for the owner of this property to be putting in its own vegetative orders?
That I'm not sure of. I mean, I know we had to do a revegetation plan for the back for conservation, but I'm not really sure what the, say, shared property line would be. I mean, I know that the garage is originally positioned, so we're trying to cut down minimal large trees in the front, and, but as far as the side, I'm not sure.
I'm going to do my part and put, put a row of shrubs.
Well, I would suggest trying, you know, we always try to encourage, you know, property owners to talk to each other and try to come up with a mutually agreeable plan.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not here to make, you know, make trouble.
No, I understand.
Be respectful in the neighborhood and take care of it.
They are looking for certain relief, maybe you can work it out with them, you'll get certain trees you want, plantings you want, work it out.
That's all right, that's all right. I was also, you know, they're going to put a fence in the backyard, they're looking to put a proposed fence, and what happens, I'm very experienced, the water comes over the top, because they're low, and they have a fencing there, it could get knocked over in storms.
Not their, not your problem.
No, I know.
Not your problem.
I told a neighbor about that, and what he did was put a glass fence around the pool, which worked out very nice.
Okay, well, that, again, that's not your issue.
I know.
It's not ours as well.
No, I just...
Do you have anything you'd like to contribute to the discussion?
I kind of hit all the points.
I don't want to, I really don't want to make a mess either, because I'm usually, don't care, let's say, but my house was, is a small ranch, and in front of me, which is...
You've been there for 30 years?
29 Ramana Drive, I've been there for 30 years, and my house had a phenomenal water view. The house is so big that I look out my windows and I have practically no roof, no view. I don't want to make trouble, but if they could remove like trees and bushes just to give me a little something, because now I don't have anything like I did, and I'm used to that, and it was beautiful, but I don't want to step on anybody's toes, I just feel a little sad about it.
There are certain property rights that people have to develop their property, and sometimes, you know, it does affect, it's a change.
It's a change, because people used to call me the little house with the million-dollar view, now maybe it's a $300,000 view. That's a little bit, yeah, it's a little... I don't want to stir up any trouble, but when I got the registered mail, I said, you know, let me come and see what it's all about.
Okay.
I was a little sad, but, you know, I'm not going to do anything.
Well, you know, I, I...
And they also mentioned, if they don't get it that way, they would put it in front of the house.
They're going to be at the microphone. We're definitely going to get... Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we ready to move on?
They also mentioned, I spoke to the builders, if they don't get it that way, they would put it in front of the house, is that possible?
Well, I mean, that's potentially what could happen, because, just because it's in that little nook, if it was moved forward, it, the setback would be fine on the side, if it was just moved straight forward, so...
But it would be in the front yard, we'd still need a variance, because you'd be putting a detached garage in the front yard.
In the front yard, ma'am.
So it doesn't matter whether it's in the side yard or the front yard, you're not allowed to have, you know, detached garage. It has to have special permission.
Right, right.
And it would be closer to the wetlands.
It would be closer to the road.
Yeah, and closer to the road.
Okay, let's move on.
You guys know each other, right? Yes.
Yes, I mean...
He has a $2 million view, so you might...
Maybe a $4 million, it's stupendous.
My view is not even disturbed by this. I'm just trying to do the right thing around here.
I would, I would suggest that, you know, if you can, talk to the owner and through the architect and see if there could be some agreement in terms of some vegetation plans.
I'll, I'll take care of my head, you know? I'm going to take care of it.
Okay, so as I said before, I don't see this as being a big request, I think it's minor.
It's minor, so it's...
So, yeah, you know, I don't get a sense on the board that people are, you know...
So it'll be, the garage will be built the way it says on it?
Probably, yeah.
Most likely.
Okay.
That's why we say, try to work out the landscaping plan, because a lot of times we should make that part of our...
Well, I may have trouble, they may have to take care of their side of the shrubs.
Yeah, well, that's, again, not your problem.
It makes sense, yeah, that's their property to do that, and you could consider...
They have to do that.
I mean, I'll do the best I can in helping block some of that.
Are we ready? Can we, can we move on?
That would be great, sure.
In a minute.
We ran out of time. We have to ask if there's anybody else on Zoom.
No, that's what I want to move on to. Okay, let's go.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? All right, if not.
Helen, Helen, it's yours.
Helen, it's yours.
I'm just looking for property. I have no, it's a beautiful, they're beautiful, yes, it's the architect, and I have no problem with the garage. And we, we, in this case, oh, this is originally, it should be March 21st, so the decision is on April 4th.
Second.
This should be March 22nd.
March 22nd, Helen.
March 22nd, Helen.
So, sir, what that means, if you want to submit anything of writing, you have to March 22nd to submit.
If you'd like to make any changes to the plans, you can submit them, and by that time, we'll take all and make, make our determination for April 4th.
Okay, second.
The second is, Ms. Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Chair of Ozzy. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, number four on the agenda, 31 Tony Tiscas Path LLC. 31 Tony Tiscas Path, Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-36-1-23.12. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for the following. One, for proposed tennis court, sub one, section 330-6 general regulations that references section 330-11 Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from street, front yard setbacks from 90 feet to 70 feet. And two, section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and section 330-83C yards to allow the tennis court to be located within the required front yard of the principal building. And two, for proposed pergola, sub one, section 330-6 and section 330-11 for an accessory distance from street, front yard setback from 90 feet to 58 feet. And two, section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and section 330-83C yards to allow the tennis court to be located within the required front yard for the principal building and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction? I think that should read pergola.
Pergola, correct.
Yes, the last one, I'm tennis court, I believe, these are original.
And it's Tony Tiscas Path, right?
Yeah, yes, Tony Tiscas Path. Brian, how nice to see you, please state your name and address.
Good evening, Brian Locassio with the Adam Miller Group, attorney for the applicant, 2462 Main Street, Bridgehampton. As stated, we are here before you for the property located at 31 Tony Tiscas Path. It is a 99,664 square foot lot located on the eastern side of Tony Tiscas Path. This lot actually comprises of lots four and five on the subdivision map of Anthony Tiscas Jr., filed in, I believe it was 1985, whereabouts. As a part of that subdivision, that subdivision actually set forth CR40 zoning. And when this house, and this property was originally developed, the owner actually merged lots four and five, creating a two-acre lot, which now is being viewed as subject to CR80 zoning due to the size of it. So we proposed a tennis court, which meets the requirements for the CR40 zoning under the subdivision, which would be a required front yard setback of 70 feet in Tony Tiscas Path.
But now it's not.
But it's not, because of the size, and that's why I'm before you asking for relief, because we don't meet the 90 that the CR80 requires. This lot has a significant amount of road frontage, and it's a rather unique-shaped lot. There's also some grading on the property, where it kind of slopes down off onto the beautiful ag reserve that adjoins the slot. And they designed this tennis court in a way that to kind of build it into the berm where the existing swimming pool is situated. And I will note that the existing swimming pools sit 71.8 feet. So even that, in and of itself, doesn't conform to the zoning today, so there is an accessory use in the general location where we are proposing. There is ample screening up and down Tony Tiscas Path. I submitted a submission, I showed some photos, and there's some very mature trees and landscaping. You actually can't see the tennis court from any point of Loper's Path or Tony Tiscas Path as you drive up towards the property. And similarly, when you're standing on the pool patio, as the bottom photo of my submission shows, you actually can't see out to the street. So it's a very screened-in area, and, you know, this is in, this time of year when the vegetation's at its least. So this is certainly going to be a well-screened when this property is being used as a seasonal property in the summer. The property will be in part sunken due to the topography. You can see the retaining walls on the north end of the property. The lot to the south is a vacant lot, the lot to the east is an ag reserve.
The lot to the south is an ag reserve?
The lot to the south is not an ag reserve, it's just a residential vacant lot. And I was contacted by the three neighbors on the west side of Tony Tiscas Path. The owner at 42 Tony Tiscas had a couple of questions, but overall, he understood what we were trying to propose, and he did not pose any objections. And the owners at 32 Tony Tiscas, the middle lot, and 190 Loper's, the corner lot, they had some concerns about lighting and sound, and whether or not this was going to be a pickleball court. It's not pickleball proposing a tennis court, there is no lighting.
What's the height of the evergreens abutting the street?
I mean, they have to be at least.
Are they mature?
30, 50 feet, if not more, they're high. I mean, they're beyond.
Very thick.
And they're very thick?
They're very thick, yes, yep.
That was my only question.
And there is other, like ornamental landscaping between that, that will, you know, sprout in the spring and the summer, so there will be additional landscaping. But.
Brian, what, why, why wouldn't you move it further away from the front? Why, why only 30 feet away there, is it, is there not?
It's, it's, I mean, it's, it's.
Not able to be moved?
The topography is a big issue, they're trying to keep the, the current slope and vista of the ag reserve that our client and all the neighbors benefit from, because if we decide to creep over, we got to regrade, and it kind of goes into the, the ag reserve. So they're trying to just kind of sink this court situated in where the swimming pool is now. And it's kind of tucked in, you really can't see this area, it's the most screened portion of this property.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the pools not staying.
The pool is being removed.
Is there any plan to put a pool in to later date?
Yes, there is a plan, but it would be up near the house in a conforming location, it's not.
Perfect.
So.
So where the pool is, where the tennis court's basically.
More, yeah, correct, yep. Yeah, we're.
Yeah, and you can see on the GIS.
I was at the, I was at the location, and it's, it's very, very hidden. I'm not concerned about visuals, say, just 30 feet from a residential lot in front of it was my only concern, but.
Well, that's, he's not asking for a variance on that.
I know.
Yeah, correct, we meet the, the required setback from that.
Yeah, so I'm fine with it.
So the idea is sunken, lot 55 by 110?
It's partially sunken, it's, it's not entirely sunken, because of the grade, entirely sunk, this core would be a huge undertaking to the, and it wouldn't make sense for this lot, but it is almost one-half sunken, and it will be.
Keith's not here to have it, 55 by 110?
55 by 110, correct, yep.
Right.
Yes. And there is significant screening along the street.
There is.
And no lighting, which is one of the main concerns of the neighbors, so I'm happy to offer that into any decision you'd be willing to make.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, any, any other questions from the board?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? One person?
You have one person?
Hi, this is Gabrielle Seperski, I'm at 32 Tony Tiscas Path.
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
We don't visually see you, but I need to, I need to, yeah, please.
Okay.
I need to swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, please state your name and address again.
Yes, Gabrielle Seperski, at 32 Tony Tiscas Path.
Okay. Okay, what do you have to say?
Um, no, my main concern really was just about the noise. I have no issue with the pergola, just about any noise from the tennis. And, you know, we do sometimes hear them from the pool, but I would think the tennis would be sort of similar. And, you know, visually, I'm not worried about it, it's really just about the noise.
You know, unfortunately, noise travels a lot out here. We're flat, you know, open spaces, and it's very hard to control that sometimes. I know that for a fact, from where I live. So you're not, you're not concerned about the setback, you're not concerned about the location, you're mostly just concerned about the noise?
Right, and I, I mean, and if it's 90 feet for a reason officially, you know, I would think that the extra 20 feet would provide a little bit more, you know, decibel level passing through from, from there to my house.
That, that is true.
Is there another location?
Well, how far is your house setback from the road, if you know?
I don't know, it's not, I'm potential.
Yeah. It's pretty, pretty much, yeah, you have a driveway and it's.
And we sloped down significantly from where the tennis court is to where their house is.
Yeah, my house is high.
Yeah, it is, right, it comes up from the ag reserve, and it goes up like that.
And I.
And one of the concerns you said was the viewing of the reserve or the neighbors, so that if you were to push it closer to the house.
Correct.
You would block that view.
Yep, correct.
Of the reserve. Do you understand what we were, we were discussing?
Yeah, I understand, I don't, I don't, I don't think that would be the case for my house, because it is high.
But it would be for others. Yeah.
Maybe, I don't know, the other house on the other side at 42 is actually even higher than mine.
It's more so from the Loper's perspective, as you drive down Loper's Path, you see this beautiful, you know, reserve.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's, that's a valid comment, thank you.
And again, we're maintaining the, the dense screening that's there, so we're not looking to in any way remove any screening that currently exists.
So all those evergreens that are along the path.
Stained.
Will be, will, will stay, and they will provide some sound barrier?
Correct.
Okay, anything else that you wish to share with us?
I know, that's all.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comment.
Is there anyone else on Zoom who wishes to be heard? Okay, whose is this? This is yours, Michael?
Okay, so we'll keep this open for written submissions until March 22nd, with a written decision on April 4th.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of Ozzy. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, it's always a great night, appreciate it.
Okay, number five on the agenda, Richard F. Reiner Trust, 611 Narrow Lane, Sagaponic, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-54-2-46.1. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Town Code Section 330-11 Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations to legalize the third story constructed within a one-family dwelling without the benefit of a building permit on a non-conforming lot, where a maximum of two stories is permitted, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
He's on Zoom.
Do you have that decision? So, Mr. Shapiro is coming in on Zoom?
Yes, he, he, he was, he was on Zoom, so this is fine, I'm delighted.
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, are, are you an attorney?
Yes, I'm an attorney.
Okay, can, I don't need to swear you in, but you need to state your name and address, please.
Sure, my client is also on the Zoom, the owner of the house, can we add him as well?
Yes, let me do you first. State your name and address.
William D. Shapiro, from the law office of William D. Shapiro, 135 Main Street, second floor, West Hampton Beach, New York, 11978, I'm the attorney for the applicant, Richard Reiner.
Richard Reiner, who's we're looking for, okay.
Okay, Mr. Reiner, are you an attorney?
I am an attorney, yes.
Okay, so I don't need to swear you in, so just state your name, please, again, and your address.
Yes, hi, my name is Richard Reiner, and my address is 611 Narrow Lane, Bridgehampton.
Okay, so, William, would you like to start us off?
Yes, good evening, everybody. So the purpose of our application is to legalize and has built third floor of this property. We purchased the property a few years ago, and the third floor was already finished, and now we want to bring the property into compliance with Town Code. We've already undertaken some other actions towards that that aren't necessarily related to the third floor, but speak to our spirit of cooperation with the town and our desire to have this be a fully compliant property. Right now, the third floor is essentially the master bedroom of the house. Mr. Reiner lives there with his girlfriend, it's not like there is, it's not like the house is packed to the brim with occupants, and we're trying to squeeze extra people in. There's no, no plans to rent this property out, we're not looking to add rental income or an extra bedroom or anything like that. We started this process with an application for an updated CO. We were working with Marjorie from the building department for a little bit, and already some of you, Mr. Herrhauer from the building department, they made a bunch of recommendations about the property, which we've taken. One of them was egress from the top floor, the third floor, that we're seeking to legalize. Another was installation of a mandatory sprinkler system, which we've since taken out permits for, and we're obviously just waiting for this situation to resolve before we figure out the direction we're going to go in with that. We've previously revegetated the property, it was a little bit over cleared, but that wasn't one of the things I was referencing earlier. I have not, I, I obviously sent out all mail and notices to the adjoining landowners, I didn't hear any objection from any. I'm sure if there are, we'll hear from them tonight. I did speak with one of the neighbors who reached out to me, a neighbor to the east, Miss Nancy Dubin. I briefly explained to her what we're trying to do, she had no objection to that. The master, or the bedroom on the third floor, the window, the window placed the house in the backyard as well, so it's not really like, and if you look at the aerials of the property, it's not like there's really any sightlines into anybody else's backyard from that third floor. It's about 180 feet to the front of the house to the south, and that's the front of their house, not the back of their house. So it's not really like, you know, if they were living space up there, it would be creating any awkward sightline into, into any other properties or from any other properties to our client. As I mentioned, it's just my client and his girlfriend who live there, that's not a party house or anything, there's not going to be any loud noises coming out of that third floor, or any light, or, you know, strobe lights or anything crazy like that. If you take a look at the property, permitting of it, the aerials of it, or the drive-by, it's a very carefully curated, maintained property. It's quite beautiful, I have to say so, I've been there a few times, and this is really just the final lot that we're trying to check to bring the property into compliance with, with the town.
There is a, there is a roof deck up off of the master, is that right, off of the primary?
Yeah, no, go ahead, Richard.
Oh, yes, the roof deck is actually where the, where the, where the third floor egress attaches to. It was there when I purchased it too, I don't know much about it, other than there is one there, and there are a couple chairs outside.
Okay.
So I have a couple of, of questions. I believe that when you built this originally, that the CO, I can't find my notes on it right now, but the CO said it was supposed to be non-habitable space, is that correct?
Well, it is correct, that's what the CO said, we didn't, we didn't build this, this was.
I understand, but when it was built, it was supposed to be non-habitable space. It now is habitable space.
That is what, that is what the CO says correctly, that's what.
Right.
What year was it built?
Seventy nine.
Did that CO agree to date it?
Just let him answer. What year was it built?
That CO was dated.
Not the CO, when was the house built? That was my question.
The house built.
Because my, my own investigation shows 2017, does that sound correct?
Yes, it does sound correct.
Okay.
I believe, I believe it was remodeled then, but I, I believe that to be true.
Okay. So I see.
And so the, the, there was a significant renovation done in 2017, but I think that the structure predates that.
Yes.
Based on my, based on my review of the aerials.
Right, and the CFO that resulted from the 2017 reconstruction is the one that said it, the third floor is supposed to be uninhabitable space?
That's correct, that's.
Okay, so now you're asking us to grant you a variance to legalize a third floor that was only with a CFO for uninhabitable space from not seven years, uh, seven years ago?
Yes.
Okay, exactly.
And how long have you owned the property, sir? Mr.? Couple years?
Ms. Burgess?
And you have three bedrooms on the second floor, and this house is just for two people, right?
Yeah, that's, that is correct.
So it's not like you actually need another bedroom?
It was there when I purchased it.
I know, I mean, a, a, an inhabitable space when you purchase. You're just trying to make it habitable to us by us granting you a bearing, and that's what. You're just trying to make it habitable to us by us granting you a variance, and that's what we're here to decide whether or not that's a property, isn't it?
So, if, if I can just clarify, so you purchased this property a couple of years ago, like two years ago? Was it at that time done up as habitable space when you purchased it, or was it empty space?
No, we did not do this work. It was like just purchased it.
Okay, okay.
And the, the Brown Harris Stevens floor plans that you provided to us, were those the floor plans that were available at the time at which you purchased the house?
I would imagine so, yeah, but, Richard, can you speak to that? I don't remember off the top of my head.
I'm not sure which floor plan, okay, like your grounds, oh, I do remember getting floor plans at the time, and yes, I guess that, that those were these. I can't, I can't recall that specifically. Are these plans that you have, Will, or either?
Right.
Uh, yeah, it's plans that were submitted. I don't know if this is gonna.
Right.
I can't recall that.
And when you purchased the property, you could have done a FOIL search, you could have done a research and figured out that the third floor shouldn't have been habitable space, correct?
Well, I, I, I don't think that this is something that surprised us. I think this was something that we knew we would have to undertake one day.
So you purchased it with, with the knowledge that this would be something you would have to do?
Correct.
Okay.
Of this application. We've actually been working on this for, I wouldn't say a hundred and five, but we've been working on this, you know, since we purchased the property, we've kind of put the balls in motion to try to make this happen.
I went to the property. It's, it's beautifully maintained, as you said. It does dip down somewhat from the street level, so it, it's not up on, it's not up high, it, you know, kind of goes down. But I, but it, it's a concern because the CFO said non-habitable space, and we generally do not approve.
Third story?
Third-story habitable space. So.
I understand. I mean, we're happy to undertake whatever the board thinks is appropriate.
What's the total height?
If it's legalized, Mr. Reiner has a focus on the safety of the property and, you know, all the, all the factors that are relevant to your determination. We're happy to take under negotiations that would favor your granting this variance.
Do you know what the total height of the structure is?
No, I don't. I can find out through a submission, but I don't know that. Richard, do you know?
No, actually, I don't know. I, we would have to.
I actually might have it on my plan.
The, the, the height of the structure wouldn't be a concern for me. The concern for me is that you purchased, that the building was significantly renovated in two thousand seventeen, which was a very short time ago. The CFO for it at that time states that it was, the third floor was to, not to be habitable space. You've since purchased the property knowing that the master bedroom, that the third floor was finished in derogation of the CFO, and now you're asking us to provide you with something that is not provided for in the town code. And if we were to grant that to you, we'd have everybody coming through the door trying to legalize a third-story habitable space that they had done illegally. And I am certainly in no position to be a yes vote on that kind of an application.
I agree.
I, I think this is a tricky application.
I'm going to say it respectfully, less tricky for the board member.
Not to have a third floor.
Yeah.
To make, to convert it back into non-habitable space.
Exactly.
I, I just want to be clear that when we bought the property, we understood that this was going to be an undertaking. We're not.
Right, so you purchased the violation.
We're not necessarily, well, there is no violation.
Yes, there is. You have a, you have habitable space on the third floor with no CFO. That's illegal. That is a violation, so you purchased the violation.
There's no violation of record.
No, there may be no code enforcement, but still, the habitable space on the third floor is illegal.
Technically, everything that comes before the board requesting a variance is illegal, so why we're here?
Well, but yours is pre-built.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think you're completely missing the severity of the situation your client finds himself in.
Yeah, no, I, you probably aren't missing the severity, it's just that I don't think that we're in a position to be really, you know, I think what John is saying is that, you know, we, we, we have to deal with precedent, and we're not going to be approving people who purchased, particularly if they purchased it and they knew that it was a problem that they were going to have to address. I just think it's, it's an issue.
In, in recent, in recent months, this board has reviewed third-floor requests for relief with regard to third floors, and, but that relief was with regard to a third floor that pre-existed the zoning code.
Yeah, some of them, yeah, yeah.
And.
And we put covenants in restricting.
From the early seventies.
Yeah.
And so, you know, the, the length of time that the violation occurred, that, that it existed really does matter. This is a situation, we're talking in the last seven years. There's no way that I would be a yes vote on something like that.
And I agree with John, when John said, Mr. Shapiro, that I think you keep saying, well, we can't, we're coming here to make the situation right. Well, that, that isn't necessarily what we always do, that we just, people have done something and then we just legalize it. So I, that's what John was trying to say to you, Mr. Shapiro.
I understand, I, I understand.
All right, so there's no way we can correct a situation that cannot be capable of being corrected.
It was anticipated, and they said no.
It's habitable or not.
Um, Michael, did you have something you want to comment?
Okay, are we moving on?
Not yet.
Um, no, not yet. You know, it, it, you know, it's no secret that this floor plan from your real estate firm has that listed as master bedroom. So, somebody was not paying attention or was hoping that this was going to be okay. I personally don't have that much of a problem with it, but it doesn't feel like, you know, doesn't feel like you have, I mean, especially with fire sprinklers. But the chair is right, you know, this could open a big, big window for us that I don't know that we're willing to take on. And habitable space doesn't mean, you know, I don't know what the definition of, you might want to check the definition of habitable space. It's not, I don't think you're going to have to tear the whole thing out, but, yeah.
It could still be used to store it. You just have to remove the bedroom.
The CFO, your, your own application identifies the CFO as permitting third-floor non-habitable unfinished attic space. So whatever unfinished means, which probably means you have to rip it down to the studs.
Okay, there you go.
And that's, but, you know, as you just stated to the board on the record, you purchased this with the knowledge of this problem.
You know, and as John said, we have dealt with third floors in the past that are pre-existing from way back, and we've put very strong covenants in about, you know, that they can't, you can't renovate, you can't add to, any taking down the houses or whatever, it's not a guarantee that you'd ever be given a third floor too. So, we've been very strict about third floors, but it's generally, like you said, from pre-existing.
From thirty years ago, fifty years ago.
And, and particularly egregious in this case is that the CFO says non-habitable space, and that's, for me, that's really an issue. I mean, looking at the house, it doesn't bother me because it's not enormously high, it's very, it's very vegetated, it's not an intrusion, it's well-kept, as I said, the property slopes down, so it's, you know. But I, I just have a concern about setting, you know, a precedent, particularly with the short timeframe of the renovation and the explicit CFO.
I agree with the chair.
I agree with Mike. I, I, I don't have a problem with it, it's just going to set a bad precedent going forward, just grant third stories that people are just going to go build and then say, we'll deal with it later on, so.
Absolutely, and build.
And it was particularly stated, non-habitable space.
Right, exactly, and do it in the face of specific documentation saying you're not allowed to do it.
Yeah.
And then, and then we would have the problem of having, you know, denying future applications and fielding Article seventy-eight proceedings.
It's going to encourage every builder out there just to build a third story, deal with it later.
We have enough problems with pre-built and after-the-fact attempts to legalize things.
Right, right, and that in and of itself is not a reason to turn down an application, you know, the as-built aspect, but this is.
Explicit.
Pretty explicit in terms of, so I think at this point, I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anybody else on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? Okay. All right, this is mine.
Susan, it's yours.
I, I mean, I don't know, you want to be creative and come back, you can come back, but I think you're getting the sense from the board that, you know, we have some, we have some issues with this.
Yeah, I'm, I was going to say, no, I, I understand. I, I would like the opportunity to possibly come back. I'm not in a position right now to say what that would be. I, I, I hear everything you said. I can't say I knew everything in advance, but I understand your position and respect it.
Okay, Richard, so why don't we adjourn this application and give you an opportunity to come back?
Well, what are we coming back for, though?
He may have.
What, what creative thing could happen?
I'm, I'm willing to hear if he wants to come back.
I understand that, but I think that I, you know, for the purpose of economy, what are we coming back for? It's either habitable space or not habitable space. There's no amount of habitable space that's going to change the equation, it seems to be.
We were asked if we want to come back, and we respectfully do. We want to do a little more research into this, see if there's maybe any cases in our favor, and we want to come back.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, you want to come back, May, in May, April?
Uh, I think May is probably good.
May second?
May second or sixteen?
May sixteen.
We have two dates in May, May second, May sixteenth. Do you have a preference?
I have a preference with the sixteenth, actually.
Yeah, that's actually better for me, Bill.
Okay, all right, so you, you heard, you heard what we had to say and you understand what you're up against, so, all right. So I'm going to propose that we keep this application open and we adjourn it until May sixteenth.
Second.
Thank you, appreciate you. I'll be back tonight.
Okay, Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you.
We're supposed to open it up to the.
Oh, public, we did, yeah, there's nobody.
I did, I asked.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, I did, I asked Zoom, I asked the audience, I did it all.
Okay.
Cover the matter wrong, cover the gambit. Our chair.
Okay. Adjourned, adjourned, okay. Moving on to number nine on the agenda, West Hampton Boat Works and Storage LLC, four oh-one Montauk Highway, Quiag, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three-seven-zero dash one dash five point one.
Just give me a second to find my boat.
Take your time. Find your, uh.
Okay.
Find your center console.
You're going to put a third floor on this?
Fourth, we're actually trying to go for six-four.
Okay, Mr. Benacasa, we, you know, you just need to state your name and address again, and I believe we, that's where you went, didn't we?
The last time.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you're still sworn in.
He was.
So will you just, if you just would both state your name and address again.
Sure. Carl Benacasa, eight sixty Montauk Highway, Waterman, New York, for the applicant, Tom Downing.
Tom Downing, one twenty-eight South Country Road, Runcsenburg.
Now, if you recall, we were here based on a, on an application to modify a two thousand and six variance, which identified pre-existing commercial use in this building, which is a non-conforming building, but we're not here for any dimensional relief. Pre-existing non-conforming use, a commercial use in this building. It's been, the variance was granted in two thousand and six based in large part on the affidavit of Thomas Mitchell, and I am actually, forgive me, distributing the research that we've done since we were last here.
Okay, so if I can just clarify, Carl.
Sure.
You have decided not to go to the town board for a non-conforming to another non-conforming use, and you have decided to come to us.
To clarify, we have decided to seek your determination from this board one more time. We have not foreclosed the decision to go to the town board if necessary. But we wanted to just fill you in on the research as we promised we would have done last time.
Okay.
And make our pitch.
At the last meeting, it was requested that we find the affidavits. We had to FOIL those and.
Thank you.
And define the, the original zoning code, which took more time than anticipated.
The E-business district?
That's right. So just to refresh the board's memory, originally, this is in the R-twenty zoning district, but originally, in nineteen fifty-seven, this was in the E-business district, and was developed prior to that point, but certainly used during that point as a commercial property. Specifically, this forward building, a portion of it is a, is now, was and is now used as in a retail capacity. Just to give you an idea of, of the area, in case you're not familiar, it's also right down the road from West Hampton Beach's Commercial District, across the street from a hospice. So this area is, as those of you who are familiar with it know, that it is a rather, it's on Montauk Highway, it's a commercial.
Yeah.
For all intents and purposes, it's, although zoned R-twenty, it is a commercial area and has evolved that way, due in large part to pre-existing uses, and again, the fact that under original zoning, it was a business district.
Could have a golf course on it.
You could, in a.
Should have.
Small course.
A pitching. At one point in time, yeah. When you should go.
Please, don't, don't bring that up.
So, under the original zoning code, which we were asked to get, and now you have in your package. The E-business district allows for a use that is, oh, and I gave away my highlighted one.
Here, you want this one here, right there, just down at the bottom.
Yeah.
Middle bottom.
No, no, that, that's not what it is. It's number six is the one we were talking about. Once, so, once you're in the E-business.
E-six.
E-six is, calls for shops and stores for the sale of retail of commercial merchandise and services. That was the conforming use pre-zoning, and that is the use being undertaken today. For some reason, when the, when this board issued its variance back in two thousand and six, while noting that, while, first of all, relying on Mr. Mitchell's affidavit, which specifically states that it has since nineteen forty to the present, at that time, two thousand and six, and, and we can, we can, we can note for the record today that that has carried on until two thousand and twenty-four. It has been used for the sale of consumer goods at retail, such, such as boats, boat accessories, including flags, bikes, lawnmowers, and bike accessories. But noted generally that it's for the sale of consumer goods at retail, which fits perfectly with the permitted zoning under the nineteen fifty-seven zoning code, E-six. So, it was a permitted use then, it has stayed that way. It should be arguably under, undercoded under law, pre-existing non-conformity in that general retail capacity, both in line with the code, with how it's actually been used, with the express wording of Thomas Mitchell and the affidavit that this board relied upon in rendering their decision, and strangely, in the actual decision itself, which notes that it's for the retail sale of flags and other equipment, which is a general retail use. For some reason, and the reason we're here today, in relying on this decision, does the, the building inspector issued a certificate of occupancy that limited it to a flag store, which I don't know what a flag store is. I've never been to a flag store.
That's what the variance says. It's not with the building department. They didn't just randomly come, come up with that. That's what the applicant asked for, that's what the zoning board issued.
That's what the applicant asked for, that's what the zoning board issued.
Well, it's, the zoning board determination says for the retail sale of flags and other equipment. So does a flag store include other equipment?
Oh, you're saying the other equipment language.
And what is other equipment?
What is that? So basically, my client has this store that is, has CO'd for sale of flags. And by, but the zoning, this board in 2006 determined that in addition to flags, it can sell other equipment.
Well, it's likely that it was related to boat showroom offices, boat repair facility, boat storage.
It's not tiles, which is what is currently in the spot, right, the tile store.
There is, it's a tile store with other fixtures and home repair.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not what I would consider equipment. I think Katie's right. I think the reference is to, you know, equipment related to boating. Can, can I ask, when was this building built?
The building, um, it was, I think, the 30s, some of these buildings.
Okay, okay.
Well, it depends. The ZBA decision talks about them. Building A, you know, building, it, some of them tells you when they were. Building D was built in 1971, Building E was built in 1961 to 62. Building F was built in 1903.
We're only talking about Building A here today.
Counter-tap guy's been there for a long time, hasn't he?
He has, I mean, how long have you been there?
Three, two, three years.
He was there before.
But he's there for, yeah, for a long time.
When was Building A built?
Building A was built, again, we're relying on this affidavit. One story was built in 51, 52. The, the property was owned by, it was, I acquired title property in 58. So he's saying that the Building A has been used continuously, to his knowledge. I can't tell that, I can't tell you that this is when it was built, but since 1940, in, in subsection eight of his, of his affidavit.
The reason I'm referring to that is because, you know, the original, uh, pre-zoning was 1957. So if you're looking at E6 to justify, you know, a larger retail capacity, I'd like to know that in fact the building was existing at that.
Oh, yes, according to the affidavit since 1940. And then in 1940 with the new zoning, it actually was, became a conforming use as general retail under the zoning code in E-business. So our proposition to this board, uh, first, the glaring issue is, was the authority of this board taken away by the Town Board Act a few years ago? Where it changed, took the right to change from one non-conforming to another from this board and gave it to itself by legislation. That, for a new application, I think there's no question that that's the case. Does that apply to a situation like this when we are asking to clarify or modify a previous determination? I saw nothing in the code that would have taken that away. And the original jurisdiction to modify or amend an application generally rests with the board that granted it originally.
I think, I think when we met the last time, though, we were talking about how this couldn't really be considered a minor modification. I mean, I think that was the position that the board had taken at that time because of the flag and related boating aspect of the variance, so.
Well, the question we're asking you to rely on, and that's why, we're asking you to rely on the information that the board had at the time, and nothing more, and that, that is consistent with a general retail use. The, the affidavit upon which relied says sale of consumer goods at retail, such as boats, boat accessories, including flags. Now, in 1957, sale of consumer goods at retail, uh, that permitted use under the code, had no qualifications other than sale of consumer, consumer goods at retail. So using that, uh, knowledge that the board relied upon in 2006, combined with the, with the understanding of what the code was in 1957, can this board, using that information, interpret that the use in 1957 was E6? And as such, that should be the pre-existing non-conforming use. Now, any change in use from one retail to another will require planning board approval, likely site plan approval, all of that. It's just what is the zoning use permitted under this? And I think it's clear that this was a, a retail use when zoning was initiated. When it became initiated, it became a, when zoning was instituted, it became a conforming, uh, use as a E6. And that is the appropriate pre-existing non-conforming use, because it has been in continuous use as that retail, uh, as that retail, um, use since that time it became conforming. That is our argument. Our authority, we believe, stems from the fact that this is asking to clarify, based on information that was available when the decision was issued, to clarify and amend that it's, that the, the decision should have found that the pre-existing use was that E6. And that because of that, you can address your prior decision without invoking what is now the town board's original jurisdiction. And that is, that's our position. And I think your attorney's probably going to want to consider it.
Well, not just the attorney.
I don't have to consider it. I don't have to consider it. It's whether the board, I mean, I, I, I think it's, I think it's a stretch. I think it's a stretch. You don't get the non-conform, you know, you don't get to look at a pre-existing non-conforming use and then find a section of the town code that fits it at the time. The non-conforming uses are very specific. They're identified. This was identified in 2000, whatever you said, 6.
2006, yeah.
And no, you know, at the time, the applicant was represented by counsel, and not, not once was he like, oh, no, it's supposed to be more. I mean, that's my position. I mean, I, I know what you're saying. I know you want to try to slide it through there because it's sort of in here, but I, I, you know. The town board was pretty specific about changes in non-conforming uses. This is a change.
And, and the other, the other part that is somewhat, you know, I would view this more strictly is that it's in a residential area now. I agree that maybe there are businesses close by. But it, it's still in a residential area, and, you know, I think we have to look, you know, carefully at that, you know.
Well, it's, it's a residential zone. I wouldn't, if you drove there, I wouldn't think you, you wouldn't want to live there.
I mean, you have.
It's not far from residential area.
It's true.
But it's, there's a, there's a junkyard across the street, a little bit down the road, there's a auto repair store, there's Strebbles, a laundromat, a.
There's a hospice center.
There's a hospice center, the laundromat, and then the car wash as well. There's also a dentist. So in that small stretch of highway, there are several businesses. And I feel that the town, when they changed the zone, they made a very broad stroke through that area and said, this is all going to be residential. But I don't think that that's really fair to the, to the property owners that had businesses that they maintained, like Strebbles, like the auto, uh, auto repair place, even the junkyard, even though probably people would agree that, say they don't really want that near residential, but that, that, uh, they have the right to continue that use. Um, I, I also just wanted to add that, um, the flag store, it, it doesn't, it doesn't come up in the table, the table of uses. I mean, that the, the town gives us this table of uses to follow. And even what code enforcement has told me when they come is, they said that, that they're, it's not in here. It's not in the table of uses.
Because it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. I mean, you're not going to find a, a, a store for, you know, lawnmower parts in the table of, I mean, you know, it's a consumer, it's a consumer use that was identified in the 2006 application.
We feel that it, it falls under the general merchandise stores, which would be 5399-3, in, in what the, uh, what was described to.
Yeah, the general retail use is still a use under today's code.
I think that if it said, um, a candy cane store, that you can't, that it's, it's unfair to the, to say that you can only sell candy canes there. And I believe that that's what's happening.
The point was that the variance was very specific in what you could do with it.
But it's good for the dentist.
Yeah, and it refers to current uses at the subject property. That's where I'm getting tripped up. The, the, the decision itself says, we therefore direct the Southampton Town Building Department to issue a pre-existing certificate of occupancy for all structures and current uses at the subject property.
I think that's what Katie's point is.
That, that's what's tripping me up.
Right.
And, and to your concern about, um, residential, it's CO'd as commercial. So it is, it's, it's permitted commercial use. We're just talking about.
It's pre-existing non-conforming commercial uses.
Well, that's, I'm talking about it's CO'd as commercial.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, but it's not, yeah, it's pre-existing.
Permitted is the wrong word, yes. CO'd.
John, why does that trip you up?
Because it's.
Because it's limited to what the use was at the time this decision was entered. So we've kind of built in what the use is. And now to say, okay, it's no longer a boat showroom, boat repair facility, flag and other equipment store, which is clearly related to boating.
Yeah.
And now, okay, we're going to put in a tile shop. That's what gets me.
Or maybe not a tile shop, maybe something else.
It's now going to be a McDonald's. It's now going to be, you know, a card store.
But we have a lot of pre-existing restaurants, right, or delis. They, we don't get so specific. If a deli starts serving pizza, they don't have to come back here.
Right, but that's two types of food.
Well, this is two types of retail. That's our point, merchandise.
Yeah, but retail is, it's bigger than food.
Yeah.
You know, if you said two types of flags or two types of boat equipment, okay, but, you know, we're talking about.
We're saying it's two types of merchandise.
Yeah, yeah, I know. We're having some problems with it.
I understand. It's, the other part of this is, is that I don't think that the town boards, that it's, so, so for example, I, we go and we get, uh, the town board to say that we can have a tile store there. All right, that's going to, you know, that's going to take some time. And then we have.
To get the pre-existing nonconformity is what you're saying. We, but we'd have to make the same, but we'll talk.
Do the same argument in front of the town board.
And, you know, you wouldn't, I, I wouldn't say specifically tile store. You don't want to create another problem for yourself. Say retail business.
Retail business.
I mean, you know.
But they may ask you to be more specific. I mean, this is the exact kind of application this board used to listen to all the time, under change from one nonconforming to another. And they were always, the simplest ones were very benign.
Was it retail to retail?
Yes, the place in.
I mean, most of them are, I'm sorry to cut you off.
The place in North Sea that just went to the town board was the one right on the corner. That was like a lawnmower shop, and now it's a sign. It's a sign and T-shirt place. I mean, it's, that's retail. That's general consumer goods. That went to the town board.
And they went to the town board.
Were they a mechanic, or were they a seller?
I don't know. It was a place right on the corner by the daycare on North Sea Road.
Because I've seen like clubs to.
At the start of Major's Path, that.
Like an old restaurant club to a.
Triangle.
Yeah, to a, uh, a mini golf. I've seen that change from one to another, you know, there's.
Not before the town board yet.
No, I'm.
But we, this, that's my point. I mean, that the town board saw one for Dan's papers. I just pulled it out because it was like, the variance was very specific. They had commodity brokers, exchanges, insurance office, that's what they were allowed, and they wanted to put Dan's papers in there. Well, I mean, like, they could probably have looked at the town code and been like, those are all permitted uses in the, you know, whatever, the.
HB.
Or, you know, the D residential zone back in 1957. I mean, it's not that it's an offensive change, it's just, it's a change.
So are you feeling that we don't have the authority to do what they're asking us to do?
I'm concerned. I'm concerned about it.
They specifically wanted this responsibility.
They took it away from us.
They took it away from us, so, I mean.
They did.
And, and your reluctance is just timing. It's going to take so much time.
Well, I just like you better.
Obviously, we're not liking you as much right now.
But it's also that, you know. So I look at the, the table of uses and, okay, let's say we, we go for floor covering store, I think is one of the uses. But then, you know, that, that tenant leaves and we want to sell wallpaper. It's, it's almost the same, you know, it's very related. But now we have to go through a political board to try, and flag store is just so specific, I think. And it's not in the, in the, the, it doesn't show up in the code. I owned another, I, I owned another piece of property that was listed as produce stand, and I ran into the same thing. Produce stand doesn't show up, and, and, and all we asked for was a, was something that follows the code. I think that's what we're asking for.
But they're non-conforming uses. You're not going to find them in the code. You're not going to find a sandmine in the code. You're not going to find, you know, that's, that's why. That's why you're limited. You, you know, you want to, you want to blanket commercial zone, you need a blanket commercial property.
Well, I mean, you can have a tile shop somewhere in the town.
Sure.
It's not non, it's not an unlawful use.
That's a permitted use. He has a residential zone. He's talking about non-residential uses. There's a whole bunch of them listed.
And there's the rub.
And are you asking, I mean, this, this property, I've been going to this property since I was a kid. But, and this property is pretty complex. You have like six structures on it.
Everything's CO'd and, yeah.
All of them CO'd, and your intent is just to change the merchandise that you're selling from there, from flags and other equipment and boat supplies to something else, to tile.
Yeah, we're looking for something more general.
There's different entrances, right? I mean, they're like.
Yeah, there's, there's all.
There's a couple of entrances to that building that they could be putting different things in there.
I've touched on the boat shop. I honestly have no problem with it, but I, I tend to agree with Katie. I don't know if we have the jurisdiction to do it. I have no, actually, I have no problem with you doing, and the tile store has been there a long time.
Right.
I've boarded the boat store, I've been in the shop there, and I just don't know if we have the jurisdiction to do it.
If, if, what about as, as a, as a amendment to it or to a modification of a previous determination?
Flags and tiles?
I'm just saying, if you're modifying a previous determination, do you retain original jurisdiction? That's the question. Maybe I can find you some.
I, I don't see it as a modification. I don't, I don't see how this is.
You see it as a change.
It's absolutely a change. There's going to be a brand-new certificate, pre-existing certificate of occupancy issued, correcting something that this board issued in 2000, again, whatever it was. 2006, that not, nobody complained about from 2006 to 2023, saying it was incorrect. Saying, oh, wait, it was supposed to be flags and other.
Tiles.
Whatever.
Equipment.
Get yourself some flags.
But I mean, not, you know, that's, that's somewhat problematic.
You already have four. I mean.
For what?
Flags.
Sell some flags.
They're probably flags for going up a mast or something, you know, like sailing flags.
Tiles have flags on them.
Now, these were always.
I have no problem with it, but I don't know if we have the jurisdiction to do it.
Well, I mean, maybe.
This is the first.
Yeah, I mean, this is your first.
We should, we, we felt that.
Well, what's the risk of us moving forward and it being incorrect? What's the risk of that to, to the applicant?
I don't know. I think the risk is more to.
Could it be an enforcement action?
Yeah, I don't think it's a risk we want to take.
No, I understand. I'm just, I'm just laying out what the risk is for, so that he can, the applicant can think about what it is they want to do here.
Oh, I don't.
If, if we were to issue a modification and it was invalid.
One of the neighbors would appeal it, then.
Arguably. I mean, I'm not sure anybody's going to appeal it. I think it's more just, it's a bad look for the ZBA.
Your notice of claim with no one with five.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the risk to the applicant is, is huge at all. I think that's what we're all suggesting, figure out a way to do it, and, you know.
I'm not suggesting break the law.
We had some, you know, we've had some pretty heated discussions with some neighboring properties over the years, so, you know.
It could, it could come back to that. You know, I, I think your point about modification versus original jurisdiction, you know, like a new application. But, you know, I'm, I'm going by what Katie is saying at this point, and she's our counsel, and I tend to, I, I support that. So, I mean, I think it was this very specific, you know, request, asked for in 2006 and granted. And I think that, you know, we have to, we have to go along with what the town board wants the jurisdiction on.
They took it away from us.
They did. And I know you're making, you're making some good points, but I'm reluctant. Let me put it that way.
And maybe they could change it to a broader category which would serve you going forward.
Well, I would definitely not go in with tiles. I mean, you know, go in with a more generic, you know, retail.
General retail.
So that you can, and they would understand that. I mean, I can't imagine that they wouldn't understand that. I mean, you know, you know, not every, you know, like at one point, Blockbusters was a big thing. And now, you know, if you had just gotten a variance for Blockbuster, I mean, you know, you couldn't fill this store. So, I mean, you know what I'm saying. It's like you have to be more generic about it. All right.
Okay.
So we're not moving forward quickly on this one, if, you know, do you want to leave it open?
I think at this point, we close the hearing and then we'll decide. Do you want to adjourn?
Proceed.
I mean, it doesn't sound like we're moving. I mean, it sounds like the board is, is.
So I mean, the question is, do you want, we'll, can we close the hearing and then if it's a withdrawal, we'll communicate, yeah.
Okay. I mean, you know, again, we're, we're not trying, we're not trying to be, we're not trying to be nasty about this. I mean, you know.
Yes, we are. No, we're not.
We're just trying to find the respect who's got the responsibility for making these decisions.
And you bought it just recently, you know, a couple of years ago, and, and you knew it was unclear, I assume. So.
Yeah, I, I just, I figured it's a commercial.
Yeah, I, I just, I figured it's a commercial, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming commercial use. It had a recent C O, it wasn't a C O from 1972. So I, you know, I felt that it was, but then we had an enforcement action.
I don't think, generally, I don't think we have a problem with it, I just don't think we have jurisdiction to change it.
You did have an enforcement action?
Yes.
On it, okay.
Okay, even more so then, I think, yeah. Okay, so you want us to, this was Adam's, so I'll take it. You wanted to close the hearing, we'll leave it open for written comments until March 22nd, with a decision on April 4th.
Second.
You will let us know if you want to withdraw that or whatever. Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this application? I'm sorry. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard on this application?
There was someone from the Flag Store Union, I think they want to speak.
The Flag Civic Assembly.
Okay, so, so I move that we.
Second.
Okay, close the hearing, written comments by the 22nd with a decision on the 4th of April.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Hi, Tom. Never easy, right? Never.
Okay, number 10 on the agenda is Todd Gutz and Deborah Gutz, 21 Dogwood Street, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-5-4-41.
All right, good to see you all again.
I don't like being last, right?
Which one, which one you win or?
Yes, the last time, yep, yep, again for the record, it's Todd O'Connell, Architect, and it is set 1200 Veterans Highway, Hop Dog, New York, and I'm here representing Todd and Deborah Gutz. So the last time I was before you, we had several items that we were looking for some relief on. If you remember, we came to an understanding that, or at least it seems so, that you were on board with all the requests except one, and that was the volume. We significantly reduced the volume from what was before you on that day. We went, we originally had a request of 6,532 cubic feet, and we brought it down substantially to 3,871 cubic feet. Good. We did that by lowering ceiling heights, lowering roof lines, reducing the size at a second floor, took it to a minimum. Todd and Deborah Gutz, they've been, this is, they lived here since they were kids, you know, their parents still live there, their family lives there. So they're really just trying to get, you know, this home where it could ultimately be their permanent residence.
So, excuse me, so you went from a total pyramid encroachment of 6,532 to 3,871?
That is correct.
And you've got the plans to show us?
Yes, I do, I do.
And how you accomplish that, okay? And you did it through reducing the ceiling heights and, and reducing the size?
Yeah, we pulled the sides in on both sides, originally we were flush with the sides. We lowered the roof line, kind of brought them down much lower. We lowered the ceiling height to bring that down. So it's, you know, so it's, it was a substantial reduction that we.
What's the ceiling height at now?
Eight feet.
I'm okay with it.
Did you submit those beforehand or are you just bringing them now for the first time? We have not seen them.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, wait, yes.
Was that in our?
They were in our submittals.
That's in our submittals?
I'm okay with the revision.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we really tried, you know, it's.
Do you have a copy of that, that you could give me right now?
You could give my, you could, I marked them up a little bit, but you're welcome to take it. Absolutely.
Cause I'm not.
Did they come tonight with our submittals?
I'm not seeing that.
Sure.
I'm not sure.
Okay, um.
I did not, I did not get.
These are dated December 18. Twenty-three.
That's the last we have correspondence.
That would be the last one, yeah.
Yeah, it has all the, it has the new pyramid. It has the elevations.
Did we get elevations?
Yeah, this is one I got with the middles.
Yeah, I don't see that I have anything from 2024.
Yeah, we, we don't have anything in the correspondence from 2024.
Yeah, so we need to.
That's fine. I thought Carlos in my office had sent them over to you, cause I know that's why we adjourned it from the last one, because he didn't have it.
A little bit out of our range.
And that, that is not insignificant for this area and these size properties, 3,800 is, is, is still quite significant. But, you know, we'll see how the rest of the board feels.
Yeah, there's some other houses in the area. We did look at some of the character in the area, there were some, you know, larger two-story homes, there was one on 161 New York Road right near here. And actually, almost in concept, it looked almost very, very, very similar to what we're proposing.
Yeah, that's the.
You know, so we did feel that, you know, that there were several homes in the area that were all two stories. I know the last time, you know, there was a concern that there was a lot of older cottages, but we did find, you know, quite a few newly renovated second floor homes. So I understand, you know.
There are, yes, you're, you're absolutely right, there are.
Yeah, mhm. So, you know, I, I kind of, when I was here the last time, we really tried to, you know, tweak it as much as we could. There were some numbers thrown around that we really tried, we actually, you know, I tried to work it even less than what numbers were thrown around at that day, but, and this is the number we came up with, so.
So Todd, it looks like whoever submitted the plan, they didn't, they didn't change your revision date? Cause I received these on February 22nd. So you do have me as submittals, but I don't.
Yeah.
I didn't add the numbers, but I think John is saying.
I did, I added up the numbers and they added the 38.
Yeah, I did, okay. There you go, I see it, because the one I'm looking at has the old date on it too. So, yeah, you're right, so they are the same ones, good.
We need to, we need to set with the correct date.
Just with the date, but you do have, you have that, but it's, I just got to put the date on it, got it?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'm looking at this, I don't think that, as revised, it's out of character of the neighborhood.
So, so let's just go back to what we need to approve here.
Sure.
So you wanted to reduce the front yard setback, side yard?
By an inch, right?
Right.
Again, because it's existing, right?
Yeah, okay. So the big part was.
Was the volume, yeah.
Right, and all the other dimensions are, are the same, correct?
Correct, it's really just a pyramid, we worked with the roof and the height of the house.
Right, right, and that's what you changed, but the rest of, the, the rest of your request is still.
Correct.
Is still accurate, okay. Well, I think you made a substantial correction, or a substantial adjustment. Yeah, no, you did, and, and I appreciate that, I think that it really, I think it's really notable, and I have no real issues with it. I mean, it's a little high for what we normally do approve, but appreciate the fact that you've come down almost 2,000 square feet, cubic feet.
Yeah, it's a lot.
I agree, I'm okay with it, on the higher end, but I appreciate the.
It's definitely on the higher end.
Appreciate the effort it went into.
I think the numbers, what last time we were spoken about is that you really never go over four, so we made sure we're well below four.
We have no rule.
No rule, I know.
No, it's a case by case.
Exactly, it's just.
But also, looking at the neighborhood, it would not be out of the character of this neighborhood, and that's, I think, really the crucial.
Saying it might be out of the character, but you're not sure, okay. All right, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? Okay, so this is John's.
Yes, so I move to close public hearing on this. Hold with written submissions by March 22nd and decision by April 4th.
Second then.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes aye.
Great, thank you very much, have a great, it's been a pleasure working with you all.
Okay, good.
Susan, this is, this is the revised, I had to fix.
Okay. What, what was revised, the?
Oh, so, and that's.
Okay, we're up to decision, so Mike, you have the decision from the minor variance.
I have the decision for the minor variance for 11 Watermill LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900, This application is for property located at 11 Watermill Heights, Watermill. Applicant seeks a minor variance to construct a proposed addition to an existing dwelling. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 330-11 Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal year rear yard setback of 94.6 feet, where 100 feet is required for a proposed addition to the rear of a one-family dwelling as shown on the survey prepared by Michael F. Michael Hemmer, L S P C, last revised January 2nd, 2024, and the plans prepared by Mark C. Matthews Architecture P C, last revised December 20th, 2023. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premise.
Second.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia? Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, I have two decisions and then I have the court decision as well. I have a decision in Yellow Shack LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-391-2-21. This application is for property located at 651 Dune Road, West Hampton. Applicant seeks to modify variances previously granted by this board for construction in a coastal hazard area in order to accommodate a new septic system required by the county. As the modifications increase the setbacks from the crest of the dune and reduce the footprint of the dwelling and proposed pyramid encroachment, this board finds that the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, decision number D 022127 is hereby amended to grant relief from Town Code Section 330-84D Pyramid Height in the amount of 2,983 cubic feet, 1,314 cubic feet on the east side, 1,669 cubic feet on the west side. As shown on the site plan prepared by architect Nicholas Anthony Vero, last dated February 26, 2024, and the pyramid diagram prepared by Anthony, Nicholas Anthony Vero, last dated January 30, 2024. All provisions and conditions of decision number D 022127 remain in full force of effect.
Second.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes aye. Okay, I have a decision in the Brian Farrell as trustee of the Joseph G. Farrell Jr. Irrevocable Children's Trust, U A D, March 22nd, 2012, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-40-3-41.1. This application is for property located at 1056 Zag Road, Zagaponic. Applicant requests variances to construct a single-family dwelling pool and attached garage on an undersized triangular-shaped lot with significant road footage. Applicant has agreed to plant screening trees to mitigate any impact on the nearest neighbor whose dwelling is over 150 feet away from the proposed development. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for a proposed two-story dwelling, Town Code Section 330-11 Resident Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for A, principal front yard setback of 25 feet, where 80 feet is required; Two, principal minimum side yard setback of 12 feet, where 30 feet is required; and Three, principal rear yard setback of 15.41 feet, where 100 feet is required. Two, for a proposed in-ground swimming pool. One, Town Code Section 330-11 for an accessory distance from the street, front yard setback of 35 feet, where 90 feet is required, and an accessory rear yard setback of 11.04 feet, where 30 feet is required. And Two, Town Code Section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code Section 330-83C yards to allow the swimming pool to be located within the required front yard for the principal building. And Three, for a proposed detached garage. One, Town Code Section 330-11 for an accessory distance from street front yard setback of 25 feet, where 90 feet is required, and an accessory rear yard setback of 10.13 feet, where 30 feet is required. And Two, Town Code Section 330-76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code Section 330-83C yards to allow the tennis court to be located within the required front yard for the principal building. These variances are granted as shown on the survey prepared by John M. Ambruzzo, P L S, last revised February 2nd, 2024, and the floor plans dated April 26, 2022, and the elevation plans dated November 23, 2023, both prepared by architect Will Minier. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the planting and continued maintenance by the applicant and all successors in interest of 18 20-foot green giants as shown on the aforementioned survey.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Macedonia?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, and then I have one last. This is got to do with the. I have in the matter of the applications of Anthony J. Dryer, Phyllis Dixon, Bart Dixon, Jennifer Doyle, Lennox, and Roy Lennox, and Michael K. Marion, and Bobby Lynn Grun, regarding premises located at 1205 Major's Path, North Sea, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-78-1-20.1. Whereas the subject premises is located at 125 Major's Path, North Sea, town of Southampton, County of Suffolk, New York, and is identified on the Suffolk County Tax Map as Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-78-1-20.1. The premises is comprised of 20.275, I'm sorry, 20.270 acres in an R60 zoning district. And whereas Anthony J. Dryer, Phyllis Dixon, Bart Dixon, Jennifer Doyle, Lennox, and Roy Lennox, in addition to Michael K. Marion and Bobby Lynn Grun, the applicants made applications to the Zoning Board of Appeals to challenge the issuance of the pre-existing certificate of occupancy number C 190097, dated April 2nd, 2019, for the pre-existing non-conforming use of the, for the receipt of non-natural organic waste, trees, brush, stump sleeves, and other clearing debris on the premises. And whereas the Z B A held public hearings on the application, and by decision number D 02244, dated June 18, 2020, denied the applicant's request, finding that the pre-existing certificate of occupancy was properly issued, filed, and remains valid. And whereas the applicant's commenced a C P L R Article 78 proceeding on July 17, 2020, challenging the Z B A decision, and whereas by memorandum decision in short form order issued January 31, 2024, the Supreme Court Suffolk County Honorable Vincent, Suffolk County Honorable Vincent J. Mark Toronto, J S S, found and determined that the Z B A decision was not rationally based and annulled said decision, remitting the matter to the Z B A for revocation of the pre-existing certificate of occupancy. Now therefore be resolved that in accordance with the January 31, 2024 memorandum decision in short form order of the Honorable Vincent J. Mark Toronto, J S C, this board annulled Z B A decision D 020044 dated June 18, 2020, and there, and hereby revokes the pre-existing certificate of occupancy number C 190097, dated April 2nd, 2019, issued for the property located at 1205 Major's Path, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-78-1-20.1. And be it further resolved that the Z B A will not file a notice of appeal or make an appearance challenging the aforementioned January 31, 2024 memorandum decision and short form order of the Honorable.